to what our committee is doing with the IZ by law, which you're going to have before[183.90-189.62][S04] too much longer, but some other things happened at the committee.[189.62-194.84][S04] The first one I went to, the lawyer, Daniel Seff, turned up, talked for 20 minutes about[194.84-198.98][S04] the lawsuit that's pending in the Supreme Court, and was trying to get them to delay[198.98-202.34][S04] sending the TDR amendment to you.[202.34-204.76][S04] And I don't have to go into the politics of that, I'm sure.[204.76-209.37][S04] I didn't understand what was going on at that point, I was too new here.[209.37-210.37][S04] It was important.[210.37-213.34][S04] I mean, he said a lot, he said it clearly.[213.34-217.76][S04] It's something that I feel, looking back on it, and even at the time, I was wondering[217.76-219.03][S04] why there was no tape on it.[219.03-223.81][S04] I know there's an audio tape, let me put that aside.[223.81-228.40][S04] And some other things that have happened since then that have been important.[228.40-231.56][S04] But I've also been accumulating a lot of information.[231.56-236.70][S04] I've been talking to people because I'm new here, and I'm still in information gathering[236.70-240.20][S04] mode, so that I can work effectively on the committee.[240.20-245.18][S04] So, one of the people I've talked to recently is John Dinklage, who used to be on the DRB,[245.18-247.73][S04] and he used to be a council member.[247.73-252.23][S04] Somebody forwarded me to him, and he's just a mine of information.[252.23-257.31][S04] So, I've had a couple of phone conversations, long ones, with him.[257.31-262.14][S04] And I want to try to connect some dots about why I think what's coming needs to be taped,[262.14-265.56][S04] okay, so be patient.[265.56-272.56][S04] I don't own property, but this whole place runs on taxes, and he gave me to understand[274.27-279.12][S04] that the entirety of South Burlington is up for revaluation now, private and public.[279.12-280.12][S04] Okay.[280.12-281.41][S04] I didn't know that.[281.41-287.12][S04] And I had started discussing the possibility, which is in the bylaw, the allowance for[287.12-292.12][S04] it is in the bylaw, that in the transit overlays we're proposing, that within those commercial[292.12-297.62][S04] areas, that housing could be built, specifically affordable housing.[297.62-302.25][S04] And I will say, I have no problem in principle with that, but some of the things he said[302.25-305.06][S04] have given me a concern.[305.06-311.81][S04] He told me that historically, SEFL has kept the tax base since the '70s even, 50/50,[311.81-316.44][S04] or tried to, between commercial and residential.[316.44-320.47][S04] And you can tell me if this is wrong now, what he told me was that now it's 40/60, or[320.47-321.91][S04] close to that.[321.91-327.12][S04] And the commercial base has gone down, and that that is a serious concern.[327.12-328.44][S04] And then he asked me a question.[328.44-332.18][S04] He said, "What do you think is going to happen when that mall is revalued?"[332.18-336.68][S04] Well, we went through this in Essex with IBM, and the tax differential landed on the[336.68-343.68][S04] Village, and there were some really unhappy people there for quite a while.[344.62-348.31][S04] So, I have a concern.[348.31-352.75][S04] At one of the Planning Commission meetings, and Paul isn't here, so I can't reference[352.75-356.94][S04] him, we were forwarded some documents, and I'm not sure where they came from.[356.94-361.65][S04] I don't think they came from the PC, I think they came through the PC.[361.65-364.94][S04] There are four documents that Paul has.[364.94-371.94][S04] Someone had done research on how TDRs are used, and found four municipalities across[371.94-372.94][S04] the country.[372.94-374.12][S01] Right, that's in our packet.[374.12-375.12][S04] Okay.[375.12-380.00][S04] They use them exclusively in commercial areas, 100 percent.[380.00-387.00][S04] And we were sent those back in, I believe, October, and after talking to John, and this
Very, I thought it was very well done. Now, CCRPC has a range of issues now that would seem to span beyond just the traditional planning things. A lot about transportation, which is planning and other things, but also about mental health and community health and other things like that. So, we had, they had very good turnout legislators. So, it was, it was well done. It was a good meeting. Also, one last thing. At a prior meeting, the council decided that you had an interim zoning application for 550 Park Road over off the golf course. And now, you can deliberate on that, having provided input to your direction on it.
Do we have a draft decision?
There will be a draft, and it's going to come to you electronically. And the hope is that you can vote on this electronically, rather than waiting to the 13th of January, so that, so that the affected parties can move forward, since it was one of those things you decided was kind of outside of IZ. And so, you can be looking for that in your email.
Soon? I mean, this week?
Soon. Yeah, possibly this week. All right? That's it.
Great. Thank you. Next item is item six, the consent agenda. We have signed disbursements and two applications, grant applications. One for the design of the UVM Horticultural Farms' stormwater treatment practice, and the other for the Kimball-Marshall Avenue bicycle and pedestrian facilities over Muddy Brook.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Yes. Do we have any knowledge whether the stormwater treatment practices at the UVM Hort Farm are near any man-made structures that have basements?
We actually have our stormwater director with us tonight, if you'd like him to come through.
Yes, that would be great. Do you mind coming up, Tom, please?
Just a quick question.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We should put that on the...
Here, you take your pick.
Put it on the, on that table, please.
Was there going to be a basin, I'm sorry?
So, so every time, from now on, every time there's a stormwater change application, whatever it is that comes before us, right, I'm going to ask the question, are there any basements that are in the vicinity of that stormwater pond or new cashman system that could be affected by a change in ground level, groundwater?
This proposed project is in the upper field at the Hort Farm, so there's no homes around it, but it'll treat the water from a number of home shops.
Okay, okay. That's what I figured, but I just wanted, since you're here. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? You ready for the vote? All in favor of approving the consent agenda as proposed?
Aye.
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 We now move on to the budget considerations and council discussion. Right here, right?
Yep.
And Tom Hubbard, you're going to lead that, I guess? The date, what is it? 12th, 16th, 19th? Let's put 72. Yeah. I don't know where that came out of.
So, the FY '21 draft budget remains a work in progress. I, I would expect to have the full draft to you sometime this week, which will give you a good amount of time to look at it before our January 13th meeting, and certainly available to, to questions that you have once you receive it throughout that time in advance of the meeting. I, I really do want to emphasize, it's a work in progress. We're, we're rechecking figures, especially salary and benefit information, which is a bit complicated based on contracts, and we want to make sure it's correct. And wanted to make sure that we had the amendment approved tonight, which will be coming up, so that we'll know exactly what the, the CIP will consist of. But I did put some of the major data in a summary sheet here, with some of the major cost factors that we're looking at. These are things that I think I've shared with you for the most part in past meetings, but just to kind of summarize, the, the healthcare, our insurance, contractual agreements, the CIP, the pension increase, and the proposed new FTEs. One for the parks maintenance division of DPW, and two 28-hour positions within the library that are proposed to move to 40-hour positions. Since the one position doesn't exist, and the other two are part-time, benefit calculations have also been made for those positions. So, they are in the proposed budget. It currently stands at, I think it's a 3.73% increase. I'm not sure if that's what it will still be at by the time you get it or not, but like 3.73% increase in the tax rate over, over last year's budget. And we'll continue to work on that over the next few days, and shoot to get that out to you by the end of the week. The revenue growth major factors for us there, we are, Todd is pretty comfortable with a 1% projected growth in the grand list. We're paying off the outfit of the vet center and the CJC.
Paying off, like it'll be done after this?
It'll be, it'll be done. Yeah, no more payments.
Is this a pay ahead thing?
So, so we've been putting about that amount of money in each year, so that's money we don't have to put in this year.
Oh, I see. Okay, got it.
We, a 3% increase in the budget, you can see what that generates for, for revenue. And then, the difference in the interest income by switching to banks, you can see what, what that generates for us. So, we have a bit of a delta there, almost $80,000 between the big factors of between expenses and revenues. And we'll continue to refine this as best we can before you get it later this week. Is there, are there things that would be helpful to you in terms of a narrative that, to go with the draft budget? Be happy to...
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
I'm, I'm blanking. Why is a 3% budget increase considered revenue?
That's just to show you what a 3% increase would generate.
Oh, in taxes, or, or, oh, okay.
So, based on past history, if we use, yeah, no, that's a good point, Helen. If, if we didn't show something, we, we'd certainly have a bigger, a bigger delta. But based on past history, we, we use 3%.
I probably should say 3% tax increase, right? It'd be fun to increase it 3% in the budget.
How much of an increase is the insurance combo?
Well, healthcare's 10%, right?
Yeah, 10% on the healthcare. The rest of our insurance is about $89,000.
Is that an increase, though, of a certain...
The group life insurance rates have changed, so there's, there's a bit of a change there. Some contract agreements, and then our property and workers' comp, you know, which typically see...
Too complicated for us to...
Yeah, I mean, you'll, you'll still all be spelled out. I think our, I think our property and workers' comp is probably about 40 together, in terms of an increase there.
But I interrupted you, because you asked, you were about to ask...
No, that, that's fine.
What kind of narrative, additional narrative things is the council looking to see?
Or what, or what other types of information would be helpful to you, along with a draft of the budget? So, you'll, you'll have every line item. You'll have at least three years of history, the percentage increase per line item, you know, if that's helpful, we can list it out that way, as we've done in the past.
Any thoughts?
We're going to talk about this some more next time, right?
So, basically, what, what we've done...
I meant in terms of any more information you want.
Well, I'd like to know more about what the FTEs are going to be doing.
Yeah, so, so that's the purpose of the 13th, really. That's when we'll have all our department managers here, and, and they can talk about why they, they feel that's important, and, and you can make your judgments as you need What we've tried to done, what we've tried to do to date is take everything that we've received from departments and basically put a priority on it. And there's a number of things we've, we've already cut. We started well over 7%. But that's typical, that, that we'll get a budget, and it'll be bigger than, than we know we would be reasonable. So, we, we begun trimming that down, and what you'll see is what we feel is a reasonable ask, and you may not feel it's reasonable. You may say, "We need to cut more," and that's why it's presented before you. So, we'll, we'll continue to look at it over the next couple of days, but like I said, I think right now, it's, it's about 3.73 is, is where we've got it at this point.
3% budget increase? I'd like to see that be the only budget increase, not have a delta of $80,000. If we, you know, and I've always said this, if we could drive it under three, that'd be great, you know, but you've got a lot of challenges. It seems like we've been hitting three close, pretty close for the last four years.
So, what does .73 equate in dollars? Is that the 79?
That's the $80,000.
For the $80,000?
Yeah.
It'd be more than $80,000.
Yeah, that's, that would, the 80, I did, I did run that figure. I think that brings it down to like 3.21.
Say this again, I'm sorry.
If you took, if you took out the full delta, about $80,000, the budget would be a 3.21% increase right now.
And you say there's still some flux? How much flux?
Yeah, so, I, I mean, there's, there's so many line items in the budget, and, you know, there's certain things that departments are asking for that, you know, obviously important to each of them, and it's a matter of taking those comprehensively and looking at it, and that's what, that's what we're doing as, as a management team right now and a finance team, and that's what will come to you to continue to scrutinize and bring you to a comfort level that will, would eventually be the adoption of the new budget that would go to the voters.
Is the pension increase because of the new contracts?
Uh, it's, it's mainly due to some, the, the increases that we had in staffing with FIRE last year, so we have a couple of additional people, and the, the VEMERS increase for this year. So, it's both the South Burlington Pension Program, which is currently closed now, there'll be no more additional employees going into that. So, over, over the next five to 10 years, we'll start to see a decrease in, in what the SEI pension dollars would require, but new employees would be going into VEMERS, and I think, I think that's an 11% contribution this year. It's different based on non-public safety and public safety.
Which, which begs the next question, since we have a block of money with SEI, right?
Yeah.
We'll have a smaller block, but a growing block with VEMERS. What schedule does the state treasurer have for informing their clients about the progress of their own pension plans? How do they manage, do you know how they manage that yet, or?
I know...
We get quarterly, you know, updates from, from SEI, right?
Uh, we do, yes. We don't receive that from VEMERS. I know that each of our employees receive an annual sheet, a summary sheet.
Is that something that we would be, that, I don't know what the normal protocol is for that?
Yeah.
Because they're, you know, they're not a private client.
I'll look into see if we can get somebody from VEMERS to come in to...
Or just, or just find out what they're, what do they do with other clients? Because we don't know, right? Because our money's going there, and we want to know that they're treating it right, and what their strategy is.
Absolutely.
But we can't tell them what to do with the money.
That's correct.
That's, that's the whole difference, is that it disappears into a black hole, and then, you know...
Yeah, it's very different from the plan we have with SEI, so we don't manage it.
Well, maybe we could anticipate better. They're on the wrong road.
Right. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you. Well, our public hearing on the capital improvement plan is scheduled for 7:30, so why don't we flip down to number nine? Is that okay? And this is the possible continuation of the budget discussion, and potential March ballot items and council discussion. And the March ballot item conversation is something that I suggested or requested from Kevin, because I, I wanted to get a sense. I'd had some questions from people who were looking at wanting to put different ballot items for additional money on the ballot, and wanted to know, were, were we in a place where the council was thinking positively about having, you know, sense for open space or what else is out there? Is there anything else? No, it's just that. And I guess I wanted to have a, a thought. I mean, I'm sensing that maybe not at this point, because we're looking at 3.73, and we really hoped that the increase would be three or under. But I'm, I'm just looking for some feedback, and of course, we don't know what the school's going to come up with, and...
When will we know?
I don't even know the timeline for that, do you?
It's January.
Tomorrow night, they're, they're meeting, they're meeting Wednesday.
Yeah.
I think they're first run through the budget like the Wednesday.
I think the numbers on the bond are coming in January, is what I've read.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think because of that, it's premature for us to really make that decision. That makes it very difficult, I might add, for us to really think about our budget, if we don't know what they're doing until mid-January. When do we have to have our budget done? January 20th, right?
When do we have to decide about our own ballot items?
January 20th?
The 21st is, is our second meeting in January. That's Tuesday because of Martin Luther King holiday, and we have to finalize it that night. We're going to see it for the first time on the 13th and have the public meeting. You can set additional time if you want, Tim, for another special meeting, or you can utilize the 21st. But we, by the end of the night of the 21st, by our charter, we're required to send it to the school district for the steering committee meeting, which I think is proposed for the 22nd.
I don't know, I can't remember. Did we schedule that? Maybe?
I think it's on the budget calendar.
So, I'll just say, since the school ballot is going to have, or the ballot is going to have a school bond, I, I support another penny for open space, but I don't support asking this March. I, I think pushing it to August, or even the November election, 2020, we've got three ballots, three votes, elections that are already going to happen. I, I just, I feel like we owe the school board, this community, the right to just have the conversation about this very big question of the school bond, so I don't support putting it on the March ballot.
One advantage to having it in November of next year is you will get a very high turnout.
Yes.
I'm theorizing. I don't know that for a fact, but I think we had a pretty large turnout in 2016, if I remember correctly, and I, I would say we probably have. So, the more turnout you have, the better it is sometimes, right? Is that, do we agree with that? That you, for an issue like two pennies, right, to add to the tax for open space, you would want a large number of voters to come out and, and voice their, to give their vote on that?
I think that was nice for the TIF, as well as for the library, community center. Pennies for, that was in the summer, end of summer, August, that was a special one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was the primary, yeah, yeah.
But I believe that TIF and the library, community center were on those big dates.
All right, well, I, I don't disagree. I think I'm just sort of bemoaning the fact that even with our deliberations on the budget, we're still, you know, have to kind of be aware of what the school, I mean, and on Wednesday of this week, they are going to look at their budget, which is different than the bond for the school, and I don't know where that is. I, I think they've agreed upon a, their contract with the teachers, or not. Is that final yet?
They have.
They keep meeting, I mean...
They're also updating on that on Wednesday night.
Yeah, so I don't know if that's a fait accompli, or if they're still...
That's with the healthcare too, right? With the state healthcare plan.
Yeah, yeah.
But the state doesn't have its yield number yet, right? I mean, its own, its own head tax rate number?
The, the, or the commissioner of taxes wrote his letter to the legislature noting a 6%.
If, if things were the way they are, stayed the way they were, right? Unless Governor Scott reaches into a black bag and pulls out another $22 million, or whatever it is, like he basically has for the last two years, you know, from some other source, so. So, if you're looking at a 6% head tax rate, right, with a school budget that's, we don't know what it is...
Grow a little, probably.
But it probably will grow some, right? And then, if there's a bond issue on top of that.
In our own, 3% or whatever it is.
And are they trying to go to March for, for this bond vote?
My understanding is that's what they want.
Well, I think there hasn't been any real discussion or hint so far as to how much that's going to cost the average taxpayers. I mean, there's a lot of conjecture, but they haven't, they haven't put out any numbers yet, and I think it's, I think it's most unfortunate that opposing, spending a couple hundred million bucks and taking it down right to the wire before they let folks know how much that's likely to cost. So, we don't know that. We don't have the final report on the open lands yet, but we should shortly, and we'll have a better picture there of, of what the open space committee recommends, and what their priorities are that they recommend. And then, we should be able to take a look at that and think, well, you know, this is likely to get developed soon, we, we better, if we don't do anything, maybe we better take some action, or not, who knows? And, and we don't have a final number on the recreation facility yet, and we'll have that sometime in, in January. But there's an awful lot that we don't know, and I don't think we can make responsible decisions for the March ballot with everything that we don't know. And if the state indeed is looking at 6% education increase, and we're looking at a 3% general budget increase, the school proposes this, and we propose other things, I can tell you, I think, I think people are going to rebel and say, "That's enough, we're not paying any more taxes, screw you." And, and we don't want to get into that bind either. So, so we're kind of in a tough spot. We may have to hold off on, on most of this until we can make responsible decisions. I think the school board has not been responsible in, in, in following through with this in a timely manner, so that people have a real, specific idea of what they're going to be asked to decide on right until the very last minute, and I think that's very unfortunate.
Well, I'm certainly feeling the, the pressure just on our own budget. You know, do you really mean this 7.21 okay? It may not be if there's a really enormous increase on the school side, whether it's their, whether they can change it or not. Yes, Michael?
Just for the few members of the public that are doing, yeah. Michael Bitag, I live in South Burlington, I resident and taxpayer. Which are all the items that you're considering for the ballot? Obviously, the city's budget, the school budget...
Yes, the school bond, probably.
Well, the bond is a, okay, the school, yeah, the recreation bond, the sense for conservation proposal. Is there anything else?
At this point, not that I know of. There certainly has been...
Big one?
Not, not the recreation bond.
That's going to be done later?
We've already agreed to put that off.
Okay.
Michael, the only essentials are the school budget and the city budget.
Yeah.
Everything else...
I would say that the sense for conservation is also quite important, because land is being used up, which, which you, as a council, might accept recommendations from the open space to conserve, so...
Anxiously looking forward to seeing that final report, that's for sure.
Yeah. I think what I'm hearing, the sentiment, is until we get some of that, that final information, it's a little hard for us to commit to supporting any additional ballot item that raises taxes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how you, by March, you can be comfortable enough with a $209 million bond.
That's not us.
But that's not us, that's out of our control.
It's out of your control as to whether it goes on the ballot or not?
Correct.
Is it out of your control for us to find out what it might cost the taxpayer?
Go ahead and ask them.
Beg your pardon?
Go ahead and ask them. We've asked, we don't have answers.
Well, they're getting the answers, and it's taking them longer than they had anticipated.
I mean, I'm not opposed to paying taxes, but I, my personal opinion is this is gilding the lid. We don't live in Los Gatos yet.
All right.
One comment, have this, you know, budget cycle after budget cycle, there are always these, this is a single summary sheet, which is really helpful for the, to the voters, right? And the taxpayers that summarize, "We're a $300,000 house, or X hundred thousand a condo," whatever it is, right? My question is, how many times has anybody gone back and measured whether what we said it was going to be was pretty darned close to what it added up being?
That's a good question.
Our auditor. Every year.
Well, the auditor doesn't look at that, the auditor just looks at the, at the budget.
And we always hear what's left over, right, at the end.
So, I'm, I'm just curious, because, you know, they, they go, our, our best, you know, based upon our numbers and projections, and the grand list, blah, 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 right, it'll be, you know, $400 extra per year for this, but we never, we never find out if that actually, I mean, I guess you could wait for, for the taxpayer to go, "Ah, I just got my bill, and it was more than..."
So, the biggest ways to measure that, Tim, is what the actual growth in the grand list ends up being. For every year I've been here, except for last year, the grand list growth actually was higher than what was projected, so the tax rate actually went down. This past year, for this fiscal year budget in '20, because of those major adjustments that were made, a couple with the hotels and the Lowe's, building and parking area, we lost a significant amount in the grand list, so the grand list slightly went down this past year for '20. And so, that's, that's one major measurement. The second measurement is what we have left at the end of the year. Did we manage the budget properly? Was there money to, at least some money to put on the balance sheet, but to at least, did we at least come out in a, with a positive number? We've always come out with a positive number. I think we can all agree, we wish we could have put more on the balance sheet too, but at least the, the budget has been managed in a way that it's never run a deficit. And then, the third measurement, really to validate everything, is the audit that we get, and Ron will be doing that for fiscal year '19 at our meeting in January on the 21st.
But does the, does the, the audit probably doesn't include, you know, a measurement of what was projected on those summary sheets versus what actually happened?
When we get the budget book, we see, we see what the budget was, line item by line item, and actual spend.
No, on the one sheet, it says on the $300,000 house, and on the $103,000 condo, this is what your tax bill difference will be. The, but, and there's a caveat there that...
And you want the definitive answer, was it?
And you want, and I want, I always curious, the following year, were they, was that projection correct, or how, how inaccurate, or how accurate was it?
I, I got you. We can, we can get some of that data, and I can show that.
I don't want to strain the, the audit process for that, but it's, and the other problem is that you're going to have to cherry pick, you know, values off the grand list where there are no, you know, property tax, you know, reductions, or, or, you know, or the property taxes is, is different because of the income, right, sensitivity? So, you've got to, got to pick those. So, I'm just...
But you're saying on the average, did we?
You'd have to be on the average, right?
But it doesn't matter about whether you get the home stip, because your, the value of your home, whatever it is for that tax period, and what is the tax...
Adjustment?
Liability, would come out, should come out as, you should be able to do the arithmetic that says for a 250, or $350,000 condo, the increase was what we projected, $400. Now, you may not pay that...
Right.
But the projections would be, that's what you're talking about, are the projections accurate? Because it's too complicated to factor in who gets what as a reduction because of their...
But they know who gets a property tax adjustment. So, the question is, for people that didn't get property tax adjustments, and they, they said for the, for the $400,000 house, expect a $444 increment, does that what they... expect a $444 increment, is that what they got? That's my, and the same for the lower priced condos.
I think Tom's point earlier about, we adjust the tax rate, the tax rate set in June, late June, after we get the numbers from the state. And we create a projected tax rate to take to the voters to let them know that. But that's corrected in June. And as Tom points out, every year except last, the number actually got better. So it's a pretty good projection as to what the taxpayer actually ends up paying. But it's exact as to what the taxpayer is.
I suspect that it is pretty good because I don't hear people yelling that they thought the projection was wrong.
You told me it was only going to be 200 and it turned out to be 500 or whatever.
But with over 50% of the properties in the city getting a property tax adjustment, sometimes it's hard to calculate that accurately.
I mean, we can measure the municipal side of things. The property tax rebate stuff, I don't know if that's considered confidential information or.
It is. Acceptance in your hands.
Michael, and then Roseanne.
Both numbers are shown on our tax bills. If you're going to get an income sensitivity discount, it shows as well as the gross number. So if you're going to be looking backwards, if you want to look back, you'll see both numbers. So it doesn't matter whether somebody got an income sensitivity allowance.
Roseanne?
As you're delivering this, and I know it's a very complex issue, you know, about pushing off, and I'm talking about the sense for conservation, pushing it off to November. My concern is that things are going up all the time. And my guess is something will be on the ballot for November that could conflict with it. So I'm not confident that pushing it down the road will make it a better opportunity. But the bigger issue is interim zoning. So at Tuesday's planning commission meeting, the chair of the IZ Open Space Committee gave their report to the planning commissioners. And I forget, out of 1,000 parcels or?
183.
What was it?
183.
Well, he was going about all of the land, then he pared it down, and he pared it down to 100. And I think he had a list of about 25 parcels or so. And when we gave our presentation, we were giving just a rough estimate, assuming there's this many acres, which was roughly equivalent to what we thought they were going to come out with. At the market rate, you know, it was $10 million. And that's how we projected the increase, or what you would need if the council would decide. So this is the issue. So the report is pretty much done. He's like crossing Ts and dot NIs, and I guess I'm going to bring it to you. So then what do you do with it? Unless you intend to do some major rezoning in order to preserve the land or other methods, which I can't imagine what you would do in a timely fashion, the council would come up with, so what? Now we, and this is not the first time, as you know, that we've had committees and actually hired consultants to come up with what land do we want to preserve? And over and over again, they have the land you want to preserve and why? Now you're going to have another listing. What are you going to do? You know, I, you know.
Well, but even if it passed.
So this is an out, I mean, an out. This is a follow-on to the actions you might want to take should you want to preserve some or all of those parcels. Otherwise, what are you going to do to preserve them? So, you know, I don't know if you are reluctant to put the sense for conservation on the ballot because you support it and you want it to pass, and you think it will pass because of other budgetary constraints, or if you are worried that the budget will pass because the sense for conservation is on there, because you support both of them. But in reality, you don't have to support the sense for conservation. The voters will vote on that or not. I don't, I don't view reluctance.
Appreciate your comments. And I appreciate your letter that you sent to us. Megan, do a little.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think it is important for this March, that's my personal opinion, for it to be dedicated to the school bond. I think that we made that commitment when we decided to hold off on the recreation center. But I am not wed to the idea that this needs to be, that we need to wait till November to hold a future vote. So I just want to put that out there.
Don't we have a primary vote in August this year or not?
We do.
Do we have anything else before that, or just March, August, November? So there's August in there. Roseanne, your point is very well taken. I think every one of us supports preserving the open land. I think most of us want the recreation facility as well. I think, I talked with John Simpson a week or 10 days ago. He said he had some ideas and thoughts as to how we might be able to acquire some of this land without taxation write-off. And he didn't get into details because we didn't have the time. But I think we need to explore whether there are other options for acquiring land that we want to preserve. I made very clear to Alan Strong, and I think that's who must have made your presentation.
Oh, yeah, he's the chair of the Open Space Committee.
Right, and he's, you know, he's right around the corner from me on campus in the same building. You know, we're not doing this, not doing anything. We're going to do something. So the question is exactly what and when and exactly how we're going to do it. But I think, speaking for myself and hopefully for the others, we're committed to doing something and making sure that we don't let this, I mean, that's the purpose, that was the purpose of the whole IZ thing. So let's make some progress here, absolutely. And so I want you to be assured that we're on the same page. So we want to do it in a fashion that accomplishes what we want to accomplish without having to tax if we don't have to tax, and being timely so that if we do, we get the votes we need and make things happen.
Well, I appreciate the council's dedication to program grants and prosection. This council generally seems interested in doing that. And we were just trying to, in that presentation, show you the various ways of doing it. Conservation easements and donations and all that. It just seems most of them are a hard thing to do in a short period of time. And as we've done in the past, if you don't have something in place when IZ ends, you know what happened the last time. You're not going to have that land available, you know, perhaps next year. It's going to be all encumbered, as what happened last time. So that's, that sense of urgency to have something in place before you end IZ. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think you understand where we are. It's now time to warn a public hearing for public comment, consideration, and possible improvement or amendment to the capital improvement plan. So I'd entertain a motion?
Subdued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public? Do you want to go, we probably ought to go through what changes we made and then open it up to the public?
Sure. Yep.
Is there anyone here to specifically comment on the CIP?
Well, so just to review, we had a special meeting on Wednesday night upstairs. And the council heard from the various department heads. I didn't have them come back tonight because I think we, I think we ended at a pretty good place. But we did make some changes in terms of what was proposed. And I think we ended up with $211,000 above what last year's appropriation to the CIP was. So originally, if we started with the DPW budget, we had considered a million dollars worth of paving and landed at $750,000 with the potential for Justin, I believe, to be able to apply for a $160,000 grant through the state that would give us some additional funding dollars for paving. His fleet was proposed at 250 and that was left. The garage expansion, which is the second year of that project, at $40,000 was left. The removal of the infected ash trees was originally budgeted for $200,000. And Justin talked about how the actual cost of the trees and the replacing of them has been much less than what he originally projected. And we cut that from 200 to $100,000 worth of work for fiscal year '21. In the fire and ambulance, we had.
Do we know what kind of trees you're going to use?
A variety of trees. Replacing ash with a variety.
So do they use evergreen maybe?
I think we'll be using the arboris as a source of recommendations and follow those. So we're going to use some expertise. We're not just going to the, you know, gardener's supply, end of the year sale.
I just wanted to be sure you're not just going for the cheapest tree and that's how you got the $100,000.
No, we're doing fewer trees and that we think they will cost less.
Fewer trees this year?
This year, yes. We're going to do all of them eventually, but fewer this year. Thank you.
Yeah. Part of the savings, Michael, was the cost and taking them down. Tom, I don't know if you want to comment on that at all, but I think there were six or seven different types of trees that have been identified as replacements for the ash. You're good?
All right, enough. Let's keep going.
Fire equipment, the proposed $10,000, that was maintained. $59,000 worth of fit-up in Station 2 to the upstairs living quarters there. The $216,000 to the communications tower, that's an annual payment that we have for the bond. Nothing changed there.
I would just note the $10,000 for the fire equipment was the CO. Refilling our tanks and there's, this would buy two, I think?
This is the testing equipment.
The testing equipment. But we could also work with other communities.
We could fill their tanks for them.
We could fill their tanks, test them, and charge them. So there's a potential to maybe make a little money. And he also talked about an opportunity to go for a grant that might pull in $90,000. Using this maybe as.
But it was more for training than it was for capital stuff, is that, did he say that?
No, I can't remember. But anyway, it just was a sort of a positive note, I thought.
Under the police station, the financing of the debt service, the $66,000 is the interest payment. The principal comes out of the local option tax. The vehicle replacement was reduced, I believe the original amount was 180. And we took out one cruiser. So the 126 is able to get them three replacement vehicles and fit up, which includes one of the vehicles being their SUV. The security and building access equipment, Sean talked a little bit about this on Wednesday night. It's, the original equipment came with the building and it's, they can no longer store that kind of footage. And some of the cameras have already needed a replacement. So the technology is just out of date and the cameras are failing. So they're replacing the building security equipment. The communications, computers, and electronics was originally at 98. It's been cut to $76,000. And that's because they're going to purchase the fingerprint machine out of this year's budget, which is $22,000. Recreation parks, nothing changed other than moving the bleacher replacement out one year into fiscal '22. That was for $10,000. But other projects planned there include Overlook Park, improvements to Overlook at $35,000, improvements to Samansky at $20,000, which I think included converting that over to pickleball. $120,000 is currently in there for the Wheeler House. We expect to have a proposal this week from Red Lion Construction on exactly the breakdown of those costs, Tim, as you asked for it. And as soon as we have that, we'll send that out to you.
And that's largely for the roof, which is failing. There's a, there's safety issues, some of the.
Yeah, some of the shingles, the slate shingles are coming off.
Underpinnings are.
Will need to be replaced. A lot of the boards underneath will need to be replaced and.
This company that's giving, are they giving a quote for the work?
Yeah, an estimate. In terms of how much, just so we could refine the price a little bit better.
So it's like a pre-estimate estimate or?
Yeah, it would, it'd be a pretty good ballpark, but it wouldn't be an exact.
But it's not actually a result of an RFP though?
No, no. We wouldn't do that until it got approved. Then we would go out on an RFP and get at least three quotes for the work.
Are they being paid to give this estimate?
No.
No, they're doing it for free? Okay, thank you.
This is one point we came up with, that figure?
Through Adam at Public Works, yep. In conversation with some people that do roofing, he's met several roofers up there. But this is the first kind of detailed quote that we'll get, other than a kind of eyeballing what people think it might cost. So we're trying to hone in on that.
Lot of valleys on that roof.
$60,000 worth of improvements up at the basketball courts at Veterans. And a $30,000 cost for replacement of the Wreckin' Parks truck vehicle. The only other change was we decreased the amount of the city center reserve fund proposed at 860 and dropped that to $750,000 based on what our current debt obligation is, which is around $735,000, so.
Okay. Any comments or additional thoughts? We had a good meeting last week where we really were able to discuss this.
So I'm fine with everything that was just laid out here. I do have an additional file in the Performing Arts Center.
Yes.
Have that conversation now or outside of the public hearing? Does it matter?
I think we can have it now.
So again, I'm supportive of all this. I just, when I look at page 54 of our packet, which is page 96 of the SIP, I just don't see the Performing Arts Center as having made its place on that list. I have not heard the Wreckin' Parks Committee, I've not heard a committee appointed South Wilshire as an authority. Ability study, which, again, there are specific concerns about that was in it. So I would just say it best to just take that off. It can still be a conversation to have, but right now I see that more as a wish list. And this is a capital improvement plan and not a capital group wish list. If we're going to keep it on there, then I'd like to put a pool on there. But again, I don't think we need either one of those things because they just, they haven't gone through there. But the pool's been much more thoroughly vetted over the 30-plus years. And I just, I can't vote for the SIP with this $30 million performing arts center in there, two years out, when the high school is also going to have, if it gets passed, which I'm going to vote for it, is going to have a brand-new auditorium and then also a black box area. So that's my statement. I'm not here, not going to debate you guys because, not going to change any minds, but just, I can't support this with that performing arts center. I think it could be stripped pretty easily and you could add it back very easily in the future too.
I had forgotten about that. It was easy to not pay attention to because we haven't talked about it at all since a presentation, what, a year ago now? Something like that? And it's still, it's still, I'm not looking at it right now. Is it still in the?
Yeah, fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24.
For how much?
$28.7.
Yeah, I think, I think there's enough going on right now and enough unknowns. And the school wants to focus on arts as well. I would tend to agree with Tom. I don't think it's something we should be focused on right now. I just, I forgot it was in there, quite honestly. I don't.
But it's not?
We haven't talked about it at all.
No, what are the consequences of taking it off of the ledger?
And it can always be put back on by the same kind of a consensus. I think that's all we need really for that item, which is separate for the resolution tonight, which is just for next year. But in terms of Tom's point, if there's consensus among the council, we can just take it off. If it comes to a point again where there's growing interest for it and the council decides to put it back on, it can be put back on.
Yeah, we can't just toss everything on that might, it's got to be stuff that's got more substance to it.
Yeah, and I think at the time, when it went on.
Well, I think at one point it had a fair amount of substance.
It did at one point.
It wasn't just a wish. There was some real.
Yeah. But right now, I don't, I don't think it's called for or appropriate to leave it there. You give people kind of false.
Don't forget, like, in probably a year or less, there'll be an open two-big-stage area on Williston Road. Former Showcase 5, right?
Oh, right.
Former higher ground's gonna be vacant, it has two stages.
Well, that's true.
Is that a reason to keep it on or take it off?
No, I, I'm not advocating either way, I'm just, I was just thinking forward about open space that would be available for something that, you know, that people are talking about.
A different kind of open space than we were talking about before.
It's open stage. Open stage.
Open stage space, yeah.
Well, I mean, you do make a point that the Sears property will be empty, that's a huge piece of property, and if you read what's happened in other malls across the country, arts have been integrated, amusement parks have been integrated. Libraries, so, there is, so anyway, my, I think that's an interesting point. Let's, I would hope maybe we can take that off and we'll put it back on sometime if it's, if it's more timely. Can we do that?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, 'cause this was a public-private discussion, as I recall, so...
Just put asterisks on every number.
Alright, so are there any other comments from the public, or, yes?
I have a comment, not on any of the numbers you presented, but as a member of the public, I have no idea what Tom is talking about if I don't see it on the screen and with a pointer.
So everything's on the website, it's been on the website for...
Page 96 of the CIP. Page 96 of the CIP.
The effort tonight was to keep it simple, just for the resolution.
Well, for me, that would keep it simple.
So the resolution is just for what they're approving next year, Michael, it's not the, not a 10-year plan, it's just... What money is going into, and just for the public watching, just to be clear, what's being voted on tonight is what the council perceives at this time, because this could still change again when they finalize the budget for this year. What the council's approving is what they believe tonight is a reasonable funding of major projects more than $10,000 in value for the next fiscal year, which would be fiscal year '21. So that's what the resolution is, and if you approve this tonight, it does not lock you into anything. You can still come back on January 13th and say, you know, I got thinking about X, and I don't really think we need to do that right now, and it can be changed. But it's, it's required by the way things are set up with our charter, with the CIP, and the amendment allows us to at least move forward with a proposal to include these items in your proposed draft budget. That's really the intent tonight.
It may be on the website, but a lot of people have difficulty navigating a website.
Michael, I'll give you this.
I know, I can do it. I'm not one of those people. I can navigate it. But just as a, as a courtesy to, well, there are not many people here tonight, but if there were, it would be good for them to see it, what it is you're talking about, to put a highlight on it, a pointer. That would be a good way.
Does anybody want my copy?
We have done, we have done that, so if you go back to prior meetings, it's on there.
I'm talking about tonight, when you talk about this $10,000 here, this particular $10,000, for others who haven't read it or haven't gone to the website, it's just a courtesy. And it would be very, it would be very good for the communication.
That's helpful to, it's helpful to hear, it's hard from our perspective sometimes to just kind of sort out how much is too much information for people to kind of take in, but I appreciate your comment, Michael. We can make sure that happens next time.
Can we post this?
It is on there.
It is.
We'll make it front and center.
Okay, thank you.
You know, in line with that, you know, you send out your packet and it's all here in the agenda. I mean, if you remember to bring, you know, who's gonna print out hundreds, some pages. But it would be nice maybe to have it just projected up there. I mean, if I could plug in, I could just project this for the people that didn't bring their iPads or, you know, when you're talking about these kind of details, unless you see something.
Sure. I appreciate that. Okay, we can, we'll do better at our next budget.
Make sure that happens.
Alright, so we need to vote on this, correct? David, do you have a comment?
I have a compliment to make. I'm really impressed as a fast town manager for all the information that the staff and the council goes through and ferrets out this stuff. It's not an easy task, and it really just, I wanted to just note that, that you folks and the staff that get together and do this, it's commendable, we have that going on.
Thank you.
The important thing is that they don't come together automatically, so thank you.
Yeah, it's a team, team effort, a lot of, a lot of folks on that, so, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to come out of the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
So then I would then entertain a motion to, what, tentatively approve?
Well, did we take the, did we take the arts thing out of it?
So we're, the resolution is just for next year.
Oh, it's just for next year.
And we'll remove that.
Okay, so I'll move that we approve the capital improvement plan for next year.
Okay, with the caveat that it can be changed if we get into further budget discussions and need to find some additional dollars in our opinion. So we have a motion to approve, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you, Tom, for all your work. Okay, moving on to number 10. Possible executive session to receive advice from legal counsel regarding the appeal of A&R Weapons General Permit 3-9026 with the Vermont Superior Court Environmental Division docket number 142-12-18 VTEC.
Good evening, Andrew Bullock, D.C.
Help yourself to cookies, too, you're welcome.
Tom DePietro, Public Works, Stormwater.
So I have on the agenda is a, is a possible executive session. Counsel was provided with a significant number of settlement, settlement documents that went to council only, as well as a confidential memo provided by our outside counsel to outline the terms of settlement. I think the executive session is on the agenda in case council wants to get into any discussion of the likely success or not of settlement. Otherwise, I'm not certain a executive session is necessary, but I wanted it to be on the agenda just in case. And with that said, I think we start to go through some of the, some of the details, and Tom was here to talk about some of the bullet points. This, the state issued its wetland general permit last, it was last November, and so a little over a year ago, Tom had been engaged in discussions with the state, providing comments on that general permit, and the state issued it without any consideration of the number of South Burlington concerns. So the city appealed that decision and appealed it with the town of Williston. We hired outside counsel and coordinated the appeal between the two municipalities. Settlement discussions have occurred over the last year, a lot of exchange of documents, and the end result is what was provided. Overall, I think the city got a number of the things on its wish list, not everything on its wish list, but certainly got a lot more than it had been trying to get prior to the issuance of the permit. So we want to go through some of the kind of additional reasons, kind of the things, Tom, that weren't in the, the general permit, as well as kind of what the city was able to give.
Sure, yeah, so to back up just slightly, we have a lot of stormwater work to do in South Burlington, as you all well know, and implementation and construction of those projects is many times frustrated by permitting, specifically wetlands permitting. So before this permit was even issued, we had provided comments to DEC on a number of occasions about how their requirements to do stormwater work and their requirements for floodplains, wetlands, or rivers, or whatever it might be, sort of, they, they weren't in sync, and so we'd expressed those concerns, and DEC issued this permit specifically for water quality work, but unfortunately it missed the mark, in our opinion. It's at a very low threshold, so everything required a permit, it wasn't clear in many cases. And having provided comment over years, we felt the only way we could move forward here was by an appeal of this permit, so that's what South Burlington-Williston did, because we have a great amount of stormwater work relative to some of the other communities, but certainly other communities kind of supported our viewpoints and our comments here as well. So, do you want me to get into what we, we've gained in the end here? So I think one of the most important things we gained is we got in a room with a number of folks at DEC, and our concerns were heard by legal staff, not just Wetlands Division, so that was important as well. And I think were understood in many ways. We clarified and allowed use, that's kind of a way of saying maintenance and repair, so we didn't want to have to get a permit every time we go out to fix something, and so that wasn't especially clear, so that's now much more clear in the permit. There's an impact threshold for this permit, it was at 5,000 square feet. We got that slightly increased to 7,000 square feet of wetland impacts before we would need to get a permit. Another, it's kind of an inside baseball thing, but there's many clarifications here, but how the avoidance criteria, so if you're gonna impact a wetland, you have to first minimize, then try to avoid. If you have a single piece of property and you need to avoid wetlands, you go and you look on your property and say, I've tried to avoid it, I can't, or I can't put my project over here. When you're a city and they say to avoid, they don't, haven't been looking just at that piece of property. They say, go find that project somewhere else in the city, which effectively means you have a very difficult time proving that you can't do a project anywhere when it's for treating a specific parking lot, for example. So we've got them to put some guardrails on that, so we all understand how they're gonna do that analysis, so we can move things forward. I think those are the big highlights, if there's any questions, I'll go from there.
So this essentially broadens the general world, so there will be more city projects that can move forward without having to go through the process of the Wetlands Division to obtain a project prior to issuing a stormwater project, which ultimately will incur a terrible financial risk. And South Burlington is a, our stormwater division is a leader. So as I mentioned, a lot of municipalities vote to us to kind of carry this core, this field forward.
Well, it sounds like they respected your position, because you've earned that respect and you were raising good issues. It wasn't a frivolous kind of, you know, pushback on bureaucracy.
So did, so did the state more learn about this than we did? Sorry? Did the state learn more about this renegotiation process than, than the city did? In other words, what, what did the state do wrong in the first place by not having a conversation earlier about what you, what they wanted you to do versus what you, what you actually practically could do with the regulation they were proposing, or whatever it was? I mean, in other words, I mean, you can make a law, but before you make a law, you really should try to understand what repercussions are. And you're probably the number one customer in the state, right, in terms of, like we just said? We do quite a bit of work, I guess, with, the reality of all the stormwater work that we're required to do by one hand, and then how implementation of that work can be frustrated by another hand of the same division, or, you know... It's the DEC on both hands? Yes. Alright, so do they have two hands that don't talk to each other, or? There's different divisions, so there's a Wetlands and a Stormwater Division, and so these wetland permits are handled by the Wetland Division, and while there's certainly some back and forth between them... And they have the same, they have the same high-level manager for the, or, do they have a management problem where they can't figure out how to talk to each other before they issue regulations and other? And I don't want to solve a state bureaucratic problem here, but the question is, in the last year, did you help them figure out that they have a problem with the process?
That wasn't in the stipulation, but...
I, I guess I think, I would hope that through this process, more folks at DEC have heard, if they want, if this, when they want this stormwater work done, and we're required to, some of the costs of that, and it may be more impacts to something like a managed wetland buffer. So a managed wetland buffer, for example, is a lawn next to a wetland that maybe an association mows. And so they've been applying, they've been protecting that lawn, and rather than maybe let us put in a stormwater treatment practice in that lawn, they'd say, nope, go look somewhere else for your project, right, or you have too much impact here, reduce it. So we go look somewhere else, and then we can't find it, or then maybe we gotta build a much more expensive project under a parking lot. So sort of the, the permit they issued didn't really look at the whole picture, it was protecting wetlands. In a very narrow way, perhaps, is my view, and I should help them broaden the net water quality gains here that we all want.
This problem is not unique to the Wetlands Division.
I don't know, it is. But they're the ones that issued a permit specifically for stormwater projects, so this is, you know, we had to react.
Even if though it took a year of conversation, you got to a better place. Hopefully, that realization and these new, I guess, rules, right, will be applied to other municipalities to their benefit.
So it just reminds me of a problem I had at IBM, I'd been there for two years and I was like, I don't know, 24-years-old. The quality department was monitoring some testing of modules, and the modules had to be heated to a certain temperature, but the testers, so they each had their own spec, there was a specification for the testing of the quality modules, there was a specification for the tester itself, and they both had temperature ranges, right? But they didn't agree with each other, so the auditors would come in and they would write us a ticket, essentially, for your temperature's too high, and I'd go, but this temperature's gotta be this for these modules. Yeah, but that's not the tester temperature, and I'd go, you wrote both the specifications, no, we're writing you a notice. And this went on for six months until I called them all in the same room and I said, this has gotta stop because, you know, nobody's winning here, and they finally changed one of their documents and that took care of the whole row. But it just reminds me of the same type of thing, that was just a piece of ancient history.
It's not just government, it's private business.
It happens everywhere, it happens everywhere, so, thank you for that reminiscence.
Okay, so do we need to take an action? Yeah, Tim must have the, unless there's some other comments or questions.
Second page? Right, alright, so I would like to move that the council approved the proposed settlement of the appeal of A&R Wetlands General Permit 3-9026 and authorized the city manager to execute the settlement agreement and any related documents.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, okay. Very good work. Now we have a second one, right? Oh, it's the same one? How come it's down twice? Oh, that's right, okay, sorry, great. We're chugging right along here.
That's Helen.
Okay, so we can move on to item 12, a little bit ahead of schedule. Receive transfer of development rights interim zoning committee analysis report and discuss possible next steps. So Bernie, are you and...
I don't know.
I don't know.
Michael can come through.
And Michael, both of you? Okay. That was a long document you sent us.
So, let me just, I have two roles here, I'm a planning commissioner, but I'm also the chair of that TDR Interim Zoning Committee. I think I will probably address you as the chair of the TDR Interim Zoning Committee and Bernie for the commission. Quick background, the report was presented to the planning commissioner in July and to the council on August the 1st, I believe. And since that time, the committee, me as the chairman, have been trying to move ahead by either having the commission accept and approve the recommendations and guide the committee on its next steps, and that hasn't happened yet, and I guess that's why we're here tonight.
Yep, that is. So you were provided a memo on essentially where we are, as well as the latest version of the TDR report. And the gist of really the reason why we're here tonight is when the TDR committee and Michael presented the, the TDR report to the planning commission, first of all, the planning commission thought they did a really good job on it, and it's pretty comprehensive with respect to what they looked at and the recommendations. There was a split in the planning commission in terms of what product it was that the city council was looking for. When we looked at the, the language that the city council provided, undertaking an analysis of the program and provide recommendations, there were several people on the planning commission that felt that this report essentially did that. I think it still needs a little bit of review and some tweaking of the recommendations, but part of the commission felt that the report met the requirements and the tasking of the city council. Other members of the planning commission felt that the objective of the city council was to have written regulations by the end of the process. So at that point, we felt that it would be a good idea to come in to the council, let you take a look at the status of where the TDR committee is at, and then provide some direction as to whether, you know, essentially this is kind of there and we just need to tweak it, polish the apple, get it done and turn it in, or whether there was something a lot more comprehensive that the council was looking for. And so in our meeting where we discussed this, we decided to hold off on making any final comments and, and moving forward until we got some direction on exactly what the product was that you're looking for. And so in the memo, the requested feedback, item one is essentially, you know, is the report, as written, meet the direction that you were looking for? And if it does, you know, we'll move forward with, you know, tweaking out the recommendations and stuff. If it doesn't, then, you know, we'd like a little more guidance on exactly what you're looking for and, and, you know, prioritization on how to get there, so.
Okay. Megan?
I would like, once we have the open space report and ideally the earth economics report, either bolstering or not bolstering the open space reports recommendations, for there to be on your committee, your, your planning commission committee, a discussion of which area should be the receiving areas outside of the southeast quadrant. That's what I see as the ultimate outcome, and then that would require some changes within the LDRs.
Which is what you're recommending in option four, yeah?
Yes, option four, which is the recommended option by the TDR committee, is essentially to expand both the sending and the receiving areas. But the question is, is whether to proceed with, you know, writing the regulation before the end of interim zoning and...
I would think you're going to have the open, we would be receiving the open space report in January. Earth Economics, we have a smaller job for them to perform. Could they move that up to February by any chance, Kevin? Did you talk about final?
Their deadline was still February.
Still February? So in our end of interim zoning is February, right?
February 30th.
Right.
Friday.
I don't know if it's Friday, but it doesn't, that doesn't provide.
Time for the planning commission to...
You could probably tell I'm quite frustrated by this process.
Unless we extended interim zoning for another month or whatever in order to get the LDRs.
Because I'm one of those commissioners who believes that the deliverable that this council expected from us were draft LDR regulations or draft regulations which were LDR ready. And that's not a small task. Identifying or receiving areas and, and sending areas in, in the entire city is not a small task. And writing a TDR ordinance which doesn't have what I call the fatal flaws of the one we've got is not a small project for legal staff either. And so if we don't start now, well, we can't start now, there's Christmas, there's New Year's.
Right, we're in January.
People going away, and I'm one of them, have gone January 16th to 29th or something like that, it doesn't leave a lot of, we would have to get cracking soon if that's the council's will.
Tom?
Separating the discussion about extending interim zoning and just looking at what's before us tonight in your report, I gotta say, this weekend I spent a fair amount of time with this and I was, I was looking for a reason to be concerned. And then I contacted a lot of people that I go to for advice, previous planning commission chairs and members, as well as commercial real estate people. And I basically spelled out what I interpreted in the direction. And it's really twofold. One, assigning a square footage allocate, potentially working out the kinks, square footage allocation to a dwelling unit, and also expanding the sending and receiving areas for the TDR market program. Both of these are very sensible, so if you're looking for a gauge from me, I think this is the right direction to go in. The question about whether or not interim zoning needs to be in place for when this gets adopted, that's a conversation that we need to have. But for what you put, put in front of us tonight, I think this moves in the right direction to make the TDR program, I don't know, more thoughtful and to accomplish the goals that are outlined in those.
As I say, I think, you know, what we're looking for is, is, you know, does this report with some tweaking on the recommendations meet what you asked for originally? And if it does, then that's the feedback we would provide to the TDR committee and the regulations would then follow sometime later.
Tell us your meeting schedule. I mean...
We don't have a meeting schedule because we don't know what's next.
Well, no, no, but your regular meeting schedule.
Which we is this?
The planning commission?
Yes.
Tomorrow we're meeting.
Tomorrow you'll be meeting.
But tomorrow is...
Your agenda's already set.
Yes.
This is on it or not?
No.
It's not? All right. And then your meeting in January?
And then our next meeting is second Tuesday in January.
And have you finished, I'm sorry Helen, you can, you can quiet. Have you finished the, the PUD regulations or is that something that you need to absolutely focus on since that was?
Yeah, that's, so we're focusing on that. And I think Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but you provided a, a separate memo with a status of all the different things we're working on.
I did. It might have been a little bit buried at the end of the TDR report, but there is a status report of each of those.
It's a long list.
It is a long list.
Yes.
On a point of order, if you like, there were three items under interim zoning. The PUD project wasn't one of them.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
It was a primary one.
Yes. That was, you definitely, that was part of it, we wanted you to complete that.
I stand corrected. But it's, it's a project that's not going to be completed during interim zoning, whereas the other two, open space and TR could be completed during, during interim zoning. And it was my, my interpretation of the council's brief to us that that's what you expect.
I think we expected all of it.
My fear is if we don't do it now, at least on, I'll speak for the TDR committee work alone, if we don't do it now, we won't get it done. It'll get, you know, there's a lot, there are a lot of things that might have higher priority after, after interim zoning.
Well, not if, not if the council says, well, you know, interim zoning's over, but we want that done.
Yep.
You know, that's top of your list.
Now, there's some TDR overlay, the map. I don't know if it's...
It's very, it's very rudimentary and by not, by far not complete.
Well, as you mentioned, Megan, we need to wait to see.
How it lies.
You know, how it lies with the other things we're doing.
Are there other comments on the recommendation? Can we?
The recommendations, I tend to agree with Tom, right? But our charge to that committee was not to produce draft regulations, it was to produce a report.
Right.
And I think we have the report with some suggestions for it, the way to, to move forward with some changes to the LDRs. So that's not going to happen by the end of whatever chapter of IZ we're in right now. But I think the PUD is paramount, and it was paramount at the time that we went into IZ because of the importance of, of future projects that they be done with smart growth, right?
I disagree with you, but, you know, other things have got in the way. Most notably inclusionary zoning. It's taken up a lot of the commission's time, which means that's time we could not spend on the PUD project.
A charge from IZ from the city council was inclusionary zoning?
Yes. The council asked for it in January of last year, after, after interim zoning was adopted, but asked that it be done in parallel.
You had a big appetite.
We're working through it.
Eyes were bigger than your stomach.
Always.
One more comment I'd like to make on, on something that Bernie said, which is that it requires tweaking. The first page on that, on the memo about interim zoning, I mean about the TDR work, was the tweaking. The committee asked the commission for some comment and guidance on, on the report that was presented in July. And they eventually reproduced that one which has got some, some of our comments in red.
Right. But the commission, in the last meeting that we discussed this, there were commissioners that had some additional questions that we were holding off on, so.
But they haven't been, they haven't been put to the committee yet.
So...
Right. That's the tweaking.
So the question I have based on this report, though, is you wanted to have some kind of broker, right, in the city? Staff, I'm assuming, to be able to bring the sellers and the buyers together and keep track and how feasible is that? I see, I see, I hear cookits.
That was one of the key recommendations in the 2007 report, too, that you need to have to find some brokerage of those with the TDRs who might want that.
Well, that and a map to track.
At least publish the availability domain, you know, I mean, just publish the availability and let the buyers come.
Right, but that, that's some work, considerable work, is it not?
It depends on what...
And we want to math it, too. I mean, I don't want TDRs, you know, that are some swamp being used, sold to, you know, include, I mean, I think it's sort of crazy to have a TDR of land that would, could never be developed, period. And to use that as, "Oh, we're going to preserve it and you're going to pay me whatever it is, $10,000 and then you can build some more stuff somewhere else," is absurd.
I'm not sure how that...
I mean, if it's billable land, that's different.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that registry would come into being, but the TDR program is voluntary. The city might ask landowners to list their TDRs on this registry, which is on the city's website, would be on, and open, available to anybody who wants to see what TDRs are available, buyers and sellers alike. But it's not, it's not a small task, quite a bit of work for, for staff to do that. And, you know...
But that could be, the DRB would have access to that, so if someone came in and needed to have TDRs, you could at least look it up, right, and say, "This TDR is not a..."
You could put TDRs on Craigslist right now if you want to. On Craigslist, if you want.
Sure, sure.
There's nothing to forbid you. You can put it on a front porch farm and say, "I've got 12." I mean, there's obviously been no problem in the past of buyers and sellers meeting for TDRs that have been purchased for the possible future use. Because I haven't heard any complaints from developers saying they can't find them, they don't know who to go to. Has anybody heard complaints like that?
Yes.
Who have you heard that from?
From some of the developers that I spoke to, which, the comments are there in this report, but some of them said it's difficult. It's difficult to find where the TDRs are.
To somebody, you go to the records book and find out who owns all the land in the sending areas and you just call them up and say, "Hey, I need 31 units. You want to sell them?" I, I just, this just boggles my mind how, I know the statute requires or asks that this type of bounty may be...
It requires them.
Requires that, that, you know, that, that, that the buyers and sellers, or whatever it is, you know, but...
Actually, the statute doesn't say that, but every other city manager or I spoke to...
I thought it did say that.
It says you have to have a map.
A map?
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't say you have to have a registry or a bank.
Okay.
No, 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 but you have to have a map that says, "This is the acre or the .83," whoever came up with that. I wasn't, it's just an acre, that I'm selling, right? And I only can sell it once, presumably.
But what's, I mean, I know that we haven't yet officially submitted the report, the open space, IZ committee, but the draft is there for all to see. The 2025 parcels are there for all to see. And lining it up to this map is something that we can do, knowing that this is a draft, right? And, and just eyeing it, it seems like it will line up pretty well, to be quite honest. And so that's one thing. What I'm, the other question I had was with regard to the commercial, which is something I asked long ago and was told that commercial was out of the question. And I don't see in the Vermont statute anything prohibiting us from using TDRs for commercial. And this is something that you brought up, right?
The report mentioned that big cities do it for commercial.
Yes, right.
Yeah. And, and the people I spoke to in Seattle and Massachusetts and Pennsylvania, they said they have never heard or seen of a TDR program where you transfer from rural to rural.
Well, that's why we're here.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
So, but, but they always transfer from rural to industrial or rural to residential. Some of them only do commercial because they want to develop a particular commercial campus.
And what I see on those transit overlay districts on your map, there's the potential there for going up, right? I, I really, I see ways for you to move forward now, I'm only one counselor, but, and I see your list of things to do.
It, it involves maybe picking the places that we want as receiving and the places that we want as sending might be the simpler of the tasks ahead of us. Because once you've done that, there are zoning changes, particularly if you want to give density bonuses for the use of TDRs, and zoning is not simple. So it's, it's a lot of work to implement the recommendations in, in option four. That's just a list of recommendations, but the underlying work is significant.
But what is your...
If you want to get it done right.
In terms of the planning commission? Megan suggested, well, you have the draft of the open space that says, these are the 23 or 5 parcels. How many is it? 23? 20 is 25. So there they are on a map and you can, you see how big they are and where they are. Before that's kind of adopted, if that's what they're going to do, you can't move forward on some of this work?
The TDR work?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I think that's, that's part of the, you know, the tweaking of this report is to, is to better define, you know, the sending and receiving areas, the...
Using that draft report that presumably might have a few more tweaks, but you're probably not going to change the progress.
Yep.
As the basis for that conversation.
Mm-hmm. Yep, I think that's possible. I think the major question is...
So you could go forth and do that.
Yep.
In early January. Or started or something.
Yep.
Tom?
Just wanted to sort of put a framework around. The, the planning commission did receive a presentation from Alan Strong last week on the top parcel, that's an excellent product that the committee's done. They did not, as I understand it, in their recommendations, recommend what should be done with these properties. Should they be regulated? Should they be purchased face sample? Or should it be some of the property or all of the property? And so there are some significant, significantly large properties contained within that list. And so I just wanted to make sure that as you're having this discussion, Michael's alluded a couple of times to this being a significant work product, realistically, some broad policy recommendations by early spring and possibly regulations in fall of 2020, just to be sort of realistic on the timeframe because each one of the receiving... be sort of realistic on the timeframe, because each one of the receiving zones has neighborhoods around them. There will be a lot of interest in each of those neighborhoods as to what the upzoning might be around them. What pushes and pull lever does the city want to install in each of these areas? Are all the properties appropriate to become sending areas? Should some of them be targeted for use of acquisition by the city or other tools? I just want to be clear on the scope of the project.
But isn't it more simple, I get it if you're a receiving community or neighborhood, that has a potential, real big impact on where you're living. In terms of identifying sending areas, that seems less intrusive, particularly if you're not eliminating TDRs. So you have 25 acres, and, you know, you've been telling everyone you're banking on selling the TDRs to send your kids to college, someone had testified, I guess, to your command, but that, that could still go forward. It's where, who receives them.
Sending areas may, identification of sending areas may involve rezoning or downzoning, for example. If it's a sending area on a particular parcel...
That's a downzoning to be a sending area only?
Well, it means...
Could be...
Currently, little to no development is allowed in any area that's a sending area. That's, that's the purpose. They went from being allowed to be built upon to becoming essentially a conservation property, so the development potential could be significantly enhanced on some properties.
But the value in terms of TDRs, you mean?
Yeah.
Right, so you have 25 TV, well, at .83 acres, I don't know how many, you know, your 25 acres.
Excellent.
And that's a lot.
I was supportive of expanding the receiving areas so that there'd be less congestion pressure on just the SEQ.
Yeah, me too.
So that's why I have opened, and I support expanding the receiving areas, as for sending.
Right, but I'm just identifying, one of the ways you conserve land as open space is to identify it as a sending-only area.
That's right. But that would be just one, one tool for conserving...
Yes, but I'm just...
Those 20 properties or whatever.
Wondering if that is something that can be adopted or approved before you actually have the receiving communities and all of this stuff.
I was just going to say, being on, sorry, Monica Osby, Monica Osby and I'm on both the TDR committee and the planning commission, I would think that there, it doesn't matter if the actual list of, from the open spaces, is finalized or not, the, the, the plan of what to do with a new sending area, no matter what it is, can be treated in, in whatever the zoning or the, whatever the language is that the planning commission can develop. It's, what the actual parcel is can be assigned later. If the concept is, yes, we want to take X number of X properties, we can work conceptually around and strategically around that, and then later, the two can meet again, so that when an actual amount is created, the real parcels are there. But this would, but by starting now and just understanding that, yes, generally, there's a general consensus that some parcels will, will be converted over to sending only, that will give the planning commission enough to work with, I would think, at this point, and then again, when the open space committee is finalized, then we can specifically connect the geography.
Paul, do you think that's accurate? In terms of how you can manage it?
Yeah, I mean, looking at this from a framework perspective, the, the, there is, there should be some form of a balance between how much acreage is intended to be conserved and what the total amount of receiving widgets are. And so figuring out that balance can be done without knowing the final elements of what the sending are. Ultimately, there will need to be, you know, policy decisions made around each of the sending areas and each of the receiving areas as to what gets downzoned, what gets up, what gets either upzoned or upzoned with restrictions.
Roseanne, do you have a little time?
I'm just approaching from a very macro view. So you enacted interim zoning to do three major things, the open space, the TDR, and the PUD. And I'm sure the goal was to have all of those analysis and reports done before interim zoning. The, the planning commission had the PUD, and I don't believe that's done yet, because they were just working on PUDs and inclusionary zoning and other matters came to them. So in the course of the interim zoning period, that was not done. But if you look back, and let's assume it was done, I mean, they've identified, let's assume the open space report's done, the TDR report is done, this is right exactly where we were in 2014, when we had the, you know, the, we had an open space committee, we had, you know, SAG and so forth. The reports were all done, the people we hired, the experts to write them, had written the reports, and in some cases, they even drafted the language to be incorporated into our LDRs. And we're five years later, and that hasn't happened. I'm just trying to say, if you don't do it now, who's going to do it? I mean, because the, the planning commission has so much work to do, just running, doing planning, unless you have a special entity to write your LDRs, you might, we might be repeating history again. All the reports are done, but the devil is in the detail. Writing, and we're just talking about the last 20 minutes, little ins and outs of the TDRs, ascending, receiving, all very important issues, that would be difficult to put in writing, it would take time. I, you know, Michael's point, which I agree with, is get the job done now, don't assume that it, it'll get done. I mean, it didn't after the last IZ, so just a cautionary tale that if you're going to do it, finish it, you know?
I don't disagree.
I mean, unless you want to convene the volunteers back to write, you know, LDRs, but most people, civilians are not skilled in how to write, you know, zoning documents. I'm just, I just see it happening again, you know?
The question before you is, is the TDR committee's work done with the presentation of this report, or is that your expected deliverable? Or is the TDR committee's work not done because we have not produced draft regulations to implement our, the recommendations that were made? We ask that that be done.
Not by the TDR committee?
Not by the TDR.
I think the, the planning commission has to develop the, the LDRs. So I guess on that question, I read the report, I thought it, I, it was really helpful to read. You included all the minutes and everything, and it was very informative, at least what I got. There was a lot of reading, but it was really informative. And I concur personally with your, the recommendation of four. I mean, I have some other things, as I've stated, to use land that can never be developed as a trade for greater growth somewhere else, I think is abusing the system and should be illegal, but that's a different, I mean, I guess when you craft the LDRs, you can make that clear, that we're not suggesting that you can preserve something that's already preserved for, for greater density.
I'm going to rephrase the question in light of David, Dave's comment, but is it the expectation of the council that the planning commission will produce the draft regulations under interim zoning as part of the charge?
Well, that would be my expectation, but in terms of the timing, I don't know if that can happen within interim zoning as it's, as the timeline is now. So the question will be in, you know, a couple of weeks before it ends, whether we extend it.
As the person who has voted against interim zoning and extending it, I will just say, all of these things can still happen after, if interim zoning expires. It doesn't stop all this work. These things can still occur outside of these bylaws being in force.
No, but the current LDRs are...
Just making that point.
Are, oh, it can happen, but it can happen for naught, because the current LDRs are in place, which allows for very different things.
The first quarter of 2020, right, it gives them through March, right, so we just have to be mindful, too. The reason for doing interim zoning from the planning commission's perspective was so that they could simply focus on this and get it done. Now, granted, we've gone beyond the six months that they said they needed, right, but these things happen as we know, right, and, which is why we've extended it. And I think we have to be sensitive to the primary impetus behind, you know, giving them nine months, thinking that six months, you know, with all the time to get off the ground, was maybe too quick for this to truly come to fruition, and...
Well, 15 months now, though, right? Like, we've extended to 15 months.
We are, but the initial impetus was to allow the planning commission to finish their PUD. That was the reason for choosing that time limit, and I want us to really keep that in mind, that our planning commission's time is valuable, and that that is the reason why we declared interim zoning to begin with.
I don't quite agree with that. I mean, interim zoning came into being, this particular version of, of interim zoning, because of the people's presentation. You were, the council got clear...
It took both...
Clear instructions from the residents of South Burlington that they don't want all this, they want development on open space going on. If we don't do it now, interim zoning comes to an end, it's open season.
But Michael, you need three votes on this board.
The little land that we've got left in the SEQ, because that's the only place you can use TDRs, will be gone.
Michael, you need three votes on this board for anything to be extended, right? So let's just be realistic. Yes, it was people-powered, but in terms of this board determining a timeline, it was based on the planning commission's timeline, and that is what I want to remind the people who are going to be voting whether or not to extend.
Yep.
Right, okay. So, it's, it's really, you know, important to keep in mind, the first quarter of 2020 that we see in this timeline, which is why I asked, is that mean January? And the answer was no, that's what I understood. So it's important for us to keep that.
I mean, Earth Economics won't be ready with their report before the current...
No, but you have two members of this committee, okay, who voted for interim zoning, who are looking to your timeline in order to say, yes, I will vote for it, and it should only be this lot, okay? So two of the four votes, that got us to where we are today. I just want us to be mindful of that.
So, are we in agreement that the TDR committee has completed their work and that this report we can task?
Yes, and you were the first to complete it.
Well, I would just comment that...
The open space committee's got this.
Yeah, the planning commission is still reviewing it, and we may have minor comments on it.
Okay.
But...
What I, what I want to make clear for the public, because this TDR keeping track of, and it's all very, you know, it's too, it's too hazy, it's too, you know, it's like mud. We have in the records, I'm assuming, some list of who has TDRs, who has sold TDRs, who has purchased TDRs. This can be found. I mean, it's not only Tim going to, you know, look at the properties and going and calling those landowners. We have records, right, in our vault, right?
I would defer to Paul. I would say yes.
So just to be clear, every TD, under the state law, all TDRs that are transferred through development review must be recorded in the land records with a plaque. So there is an exact location of every TDR that has moved from parcel A to parcel B. In addition to that...
But for each move, there's a, there's a location, or they're all centralized?
With each move, the state law says that, let's say a house is built in the Rye neighborhood, which use TDRs. When they trip the point, when they need TDRs, it must be recorded in the land records exactly where those came from, along with a deed restricting that parcel from future development.
In a survey.
In a survey, so, for example...
That portion of the parcel, okay.
Correct, so there's a portion of the off layer parcel that has a exact portion of where TDRs have been, the term that the state uses severed, they've been removed from development. Separate from that, so that we maintain. Separate from that, with the work, thanks to Tom Bailey and Michael, we have a list of, using our GIS mapping essentially, all of the land that is within the natural resource protection district, and approximate, or close to how many acres exists in each one of those, which would provide an overall close estimate of the amount of TDRs available. Sometimes they get severed, as I just used as an example. In some cases, they get used within a development, so the South Point neighborhood, for instance, all the homes are relatively close to Spear Street, they used up all the TDR potential from the eastern portion of their property, so it's, so we have to, we have to account for that, and that we have in a parcel-by-parcel basis, but that, thanks to Michael and Tom, we've got a pretty good handle on across the board.
And Paul, who did a very, very detailed analysis, which none of us would have been able to do.
So, have we answered your question?
I think so. I don't know, I'm not sure that Bernie has answered my question, because the tweaking, this was the tweaking for Bernie.
Well, you, we can talk about that separately, but you remember in the planning commission meeting where you presented this, Art, in particular, had some comments?
He wrote this.
Okay.
So the process going forward, then, so just so I understand this, so we've kind of said to you, you're looking at the TDR final, there, final report.
Mm-hmm.
The planning commission might make some adjustments or tweaks to that final report. Does that then come to us, or have we looked at it and said, you know, we liked the, you know, number four, and...
I would expect that if the planning commission had any final changes, that...
Which presented...
We would, we would let the TDR committee know, these are the specific things that we would like you to add, subtract, flesh out. They would do that, and then the planning commission would then present that as, this is 100% done. Right now, I would say it's 90% done or 95% done, but before we got it to 100% done, we wanted to make sure this is what you were looking for.
The one question I have for Michael, Monica, and Tim, are the business uses not currently permitted as part of your recommendation, right? The map uses TDRs in conjunction with current zoning to increase residential density, and in some cases, business uses not currently permitted. What does that refer to?
It might refer to, if I'm not correct, if I'm wrong, that maybe in a commercial property, that the allowable lot density is 50%. You could build on 50% of it, however, with each TDR that you buy, you can get another 10,000 square feet.
Gotcha, all right, so...
But I thought we were limited by the statute, the units only, to residential units, so we have to be careful about what...
The statute doesn't refer to residential units, as you copied it.
No, we talked about multiple...
It could be density, lot coverage, or other measurements of bulk. Those, those are the, those are the options.
Bulk, bulk?
Bulk.
Like going up?
It could be height, it could be square footage, it could be building coverage, those are the restrictions.
Three square footage and bulk?
There might be a requirement, in a zone that you can, you can only have three stories.
Right, so bulk is going up. Is that what you mean by that?
Bulk could be going up, it could be going out, it could be, it's broadly written to be the things that measure the size of something, but it can't be, for instance, one use versus another use. Restaurants, but not offices, the allowance of, it has to be an amount of something. Does that make sense?
Yes. So I have density, square footage, and bulk, meaning height and lot coverage. Amen. I am so glad. Yes, to that. Okay.
Good. We're good?
I think we're good. Roseanne?
Just one question. You asked the question, but I never heard the answer. Is the PUD done? I mean, we know about open space.
No, PUD is not done.
So that's not done yet?
First quarter of 2020.
That's when that was done.
That's close to being done, correct, Paul?
Yes.
Yeah. It just isn't quite done.
Right. Working.
Something for the new year.
Working to meet the deadline.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
A lot of work.
And all for free. Thank you to our volunteers.
We need to do more things for our volunteers.
Yes, we do. Helen brings cookies. I bring cookies. What do you do? I'm just asking. I'm just wondering. Please pass them around.
Volunteers.
I'm with you. I want to do more.
Okay. Moving on to item 13, this is the review and possible approved, the errors and omissions report from the tax assessor for the 2019 grant list. Did we have it in our packs?
No.
Oh, okay. I was thinking. Well, I didn't remember reading it, so it's like, oh, okay.
So Todd had shared this listing with me. I didn't ask him to be here tonight, because there's nothing that represents any change in value. But it's merely corrections, misspellings, wrong address, those types of comments. But this is a requirement of our charter for the grant list. These corrections need to be approved by the city council every year. So there are some on the back as well. It's, and that's kind of the shortlist. As you can remember, we've had years that this has been eight or more pages long.
Are these new rental properties, what have been mailing address changes?
I'm not sure, maybe. I'll find out.
Yeah, because, do we usually have this many mailing address changes?
No.
It seems like an enormous number of corrections. Like, has something changed in terms of how we gather data?
This, this is a shorter list than is typical.
Oh.
Yeah. It's usually, well, I've seen it, eight to 13 pages long.
And there's been this many mailing address changes? That's what I meant.
Not, oh, not always on the mailing address now.
Yeah, yeah.
What typically causes a mailing address change?
Change of address.
Wrong number of the house, misspelling of the name of the road.
Oh, it could be a simple misspelling.
Just a change, but not, not the actual address has changed, or could the address actually be-
The last person who-
Rarely. Yeah, more likely even the number or the road.
I just want to say, I do see a lot in the, not only, but the number. I'm not saying even, I didn't count, I'm not saying mostly, but I see a lot in the chamber mailing. Mailing address change.
Why would you think that's, why?
Oh, because they've become rentals?
Yes.
Because of the gorilla, the 35,000 pound gorilla in my neighborhood. Okay. All right, do we need to approve this? We do.
I move that we approve the errors and omissions report from the tax assessor for the 2019 grant list.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We convene as a liquor board.
Did you guys get the background for-
The Weird Window?
Weird Window Brewing?
Yes, it was about 85 pages.
Okay.
Gosh. I mean, really?
Well, it was a separate, it was a separate.
I know, it was a separate thing.
I just wanted to make sure.
So that begs the question, should the council be privy to some of those documents in there? I mean, we were successful in getting the social security numbers code. Should we be privy to some of those background check information?
I mean, part of the requirement.
For us to be able to see it is for the, for the occasion, right?
For the state.
For state.
Because this thing goes on to the state liquor control.
Right, right. But do, I'm just curious, do, do we need to see that?
But we swear to uphold our laws, so we are, I think, also held accountable to maintain private information privately.
I, I understand.
I mean, this couple went to an excessive amount of any infractions.
All voluntary.
Oh, I know, I know. I feel like the math test in eighth grade. I took it in. Well, you can't believe how much stuff they, we've never seen before.
We're going to let it talk about it.
No, I'm not going to share it, but it was just remarkable to me. I mean, usually it's just a speeding ticket, or DUI, or something big. But this was, oh. A man.
All right. I move to approve-
I was surprised.
Oh, I move to enter the liquor control board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now the South Burlington Liquor Control Commission. We have one application before us for the Weird Window Brewing LLC.
I move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion?
This is the former Farden?
Yes.
Miss Farden?
I have a little beer.
Oh, they had some really, some really good beer. Anyway, let's vote.
Well, they probably sell beer, too.
I'm sure the new company's going to have good beer, too, so.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Reports from councillors on committee assignments.
We exit the-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to adjourn now.
I'm going to exit the liquor control.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So moving on, reports from councillors on committee assignments. Does anyone have any?
I'd like to report a few things about GMT.
Oh, good.
So one, we're facing a very tough budget year. I just want to say again, these things don't generate themselves. So I just really appreciate all of the articulation and clarity you give us throughout the budget process. I'm not faulting GMT at all, but I just say, we're not looking at nearly as a, as a sustainable picture right now. We're falling short of about $1 million.
Last year was $1 million.
It's, we've been, we've depleted all our reserves. So we've opened up conversations with a variety of legislators, but we are making some, some very deep and painful cuts. And so that's going to happen over the next month or two. It's going to be service cuts as well as others. And also tomorrow morning, 7:00 AM is the last meeting, and I will be chairing. I'm going to be stepping down as chair as of January 1st, and that was already the case for quite some time. I was going to do it last July, but I extended for six months. But I will stay on the board as long as you all are still okay with me there. But the new chair will be Monty Weniger, and we have yet to get to his chair. I plan to stay active, and I, we are engaged with the state house, the variety of conversations about more sustainable funding methods that are, we see in other states, being car registration fees. I'd also love to be able to assess the rural communities in the same way our urban communities are assessed, like us. So we're looking at a variety of different ways, creative ways for the long-term sustainability of public transportation in the state. But sadly, I would expect that we can see a decrease in service hours in South Burlington next year, just because we can't continue to offer the frequency necessary. We've got to find the savings somewhere. We're finding it in a variety of places.
Is that at late night?
It'll be likely. It all has to be approved by the board, but everything I'm seeing is midday. So part of the next gen was to go to 20 minutes throughout the day.
Right.
And so that consistency was a big plus, and it just, it helps for people that use it to get to work, but we'll probably go after 30 minutes during midday. That saves about $250,000 a year on that frequency. And we're going to look at other cuts in the rural areas, so.
Well, you're going to ask them for money? Interesting.
It's a possibility.
Good luck on that one.
How much of your revenue is just fares?
About 2.2 million. Right now, Tim Ash, as well as Kirk McCormick, are intrigued by the notion of fare-free, because we should see ridership increase. We just need to find, um, $2 million.
Right. That's all just to you.
And that represents what percent of your budget? 22 million dollar budget. So it's, it's-
10%.
So it's not unheard of, but where does that money come from?
Well, I don't understand.
I've got some other ideas, I could talk to you about it, but I don't think this body would have much influence over that.
You start giving away fares for free, and then you dig yourself a bigger hole. You cut back service, and people get disenchanted and go back to driving their cars. I think, you know, honestly, this is, this is a problem that's been around for decades. It doesn't seem to be getting, you know, everybody keeps hoping it's going to, people are going to get out of their cars, they're going to get on the buses, they're going to make more progress. Somehow, it doesn't seem we ever make progress on any public transportation. It's very disheartening, really. And you can't go, the rural communities are all stretched thin on their budget, so you're going to go ask them for more money? Forget it.
I just want to be able, they already are giving us money, but every year to go to 45-plus communities and ask for a 3% increase, and sometimes they cut us from the budget because you get new select board members, and they are looking to trim. I wanted to just be able to send them a bill, a reasonable amount, it's about $5,000 to $10,000 in the smaller communities. That graduates each year. That would make our rural side more sustainable.
And our, our support is statutory, isn't it?
We are part of the, Colchester is flirting with joining-
It'll just go up.
So Colchester might join as a member community. We're going to be discussing a service agreement that would get us to there.
How much do we pay now?
$525,000 last year.
Will you set that assessment tomorrow?
So tomorrow, we'll be voting on, the board might go for 5% increase. Last year, we were at 4%. I, representing the interests of South Burlington, am currently only supporting a 4% increase. If you want to influence that, I can go another way. I, we already increased it last year to 4%, and now this year, again, we're trying to find, just about everywhere. I just feel like we are overtaxing urban communities, and I, I want to find more ways for all of our five counties to contribute. And I, I'm currently only at the 4%, but if you all say you're ready to go 5%, talk to, as long as he's okay with it.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what that difference is. It's probably about $4,000.
Well, I commend you for the, for the attempt you made. It's most unfortunate.
I, I love the bus. I just, I just, I have to follow up on what you said, which was very disheartening, and we can't leave it on that note. I have to say that when it's horrible weather outside, I am so glad to just go on the bus. I let someone else deal with the must, the mess, deal with the traffic. I can sit, I can read, I can do my emails. I am in a warm, comfortable environment. I love, I love the bus. I, yes, and I love your new routes. I love the Next Gen. I can go from 20 to 30 minutes. I think that's reasonable. But I just, I find it to be just an, oh, duh.
Well, all I'm saying is, it's, it's been, it's been a battle we've been fighting for years and years and years. I remember, I remember back in the House Transportation Committee 30 years ago, same discussions, same arguments, same problems, same challenges, and it just is-
It's just a matter of seeing the light. It's true, to me, it was a matter of seeing the light, because I was someone stuck in my car with my little parking sticker, getting through all that bottleneck to get to UVM for years, right? And all of a sudden, they made parking much more difficult at UVM. I said, let me try. And it was like, why haven't I been doing this since day one? This is a dream. It is a dr, it is.
Should we just lobby the, the, the state house to increase the gas tax by 75 cents?
So, for what it's worth-
Here's some of that for GMT.
For what it's worth, ridership is finally increasing, but we had four declining years. And to your point, ridership on public transportation tracks exactly inversely to gas prices and the economy. Sure. The better the economy, the less they take. So to your point, increase gas prices, the gas taxes, people will take public transportation more. Or if we have a major economic downturn, that would really help out.
Yeah.
Hard root for that, though.
Root for that. Yeah.
Well, I mean, things are finally increasing. I do want to make that clear. We're up, I think, 6% or 7% ridership, but there was four solid years of double-digit declines.
Even in Chitham County?
Across the board.
The year the gas went over $4. Do you, do you have any recollection of what happened? I'm just curious.
Oh, transportation was at an all-time high, if I recall correctly. You know, the whole paradigm. But I've used up a lot of time on this, I just thought I'd give you some heads up and-
No, thanks.
Okay.
Well, no, it's worth $5,000.
To spend some time.
Okay.
I, I would like you to stay at 4%, if you can personally.
I, I don't know, there might be a majority of voters to go to 5, but I-
Well, I, I get that, but I think that's where I am. I mean, do you want some, like, a little vote or something? Are people wishing for it to go up to 5% or, it might anyway?
I just, I, I'm just, to put it out there, when I had a conference in Washington, DC, free transportation, Georgetown, free transportation, and they did that after some kind of catastrophe, was it, and I'm, I'm sorry, I've been grading for, for weeks on end, so I cannot, and we don't need to dwell. But it, it, it's something that municipalities do invest in. It is part of the plan to create, you know, an environmental plan and a, and a smart energy plan. So I'm, if it's $4,000 or $5,000, I tend to say I'd go for 5. You know, Burlington still has that, that part of, now it's the purple line, it's still number 11, they still have it on the bus, that's free, going up to the hospital from, you know, the Old North, or is it the New North End where it starts? I can't remember. But that's because it serves a purpose. It serves a social purpose, and there's something to that.
So actually, it'll only be about $3,000, but it will be a larger increase-
So $3,000.
Because we're recalculating it. But the 4% or 5% difference, $3,000.
$3,000. That and the other option, I'd go for $3,000.
It'll be $3,000 more than what we pay now.
So it's $311,000 plus the ADA's.
And the ADA assessments add to another 200?
That we can't control.
Well, you're the, you're the chair at the moment, and you've been watching this more closely than anybody else. So I value your opinion. What do you think we should do?
I want to stay at 4% for the following reason. I have a letter from our auditor, who is Ron Smith, who we all know, and he wrote a very nice letter. He's been with us for eight years, and that he, too, sees our financial, our sustainably unfin, unsustainable financial picture, and he looks to funding formula for the rural communities, that it is unsustainable since we merged in 2009. We need to extend the same methodology that we use for the urban communities for the, our entire service network, but that didn't happen. So he wrote a letter saying we need to look at our birthright, open up our charter, and find a fairer funding method across our entire service region. So I'm at 4% because I want to put pressure on that, but I, I also want GMT to succeed. So I'm, I'm on the bubble here, and I didn't want to be the deciding vote tomorrow, is what I was kind of hoping.
I'd go with it. You could say, we should go to 5%. I'd go with that, but you're the expert on this one, and I'll go with what you said. While I fully understand what, what Megan has said, because if they can accomplish the same purpose, with some added pressure based on the auditor's recommendations, that's the right thing to do.[1610.12] that's the right thing to do. So, that's what we should try.
I'm deciding, though, I'll go with a five percent, all right? But if I'm not, then I'll go with the four.
Huh.
Tomorrow, we'll go with what you, what you decide is best.
Okay, any other committee assignments?
Just that we put together the final parcels. We put together the final narratives on the parcels, and it's been presented to the planning commission, and we will soon have it in our hands.
Open space to me?
Open space, I see.
That's fantastic.
Here are Valiant member, who's done a lot of legwork for the committee. I just wanna thank him publicly, in addition to Alan Strong, Duncan Murdoch as well, and Allison Schellner. Amanda has done amazing work on the Bike and Pet Committee. It's, it's an amazing committee of people. We've had Bernie and, and, you know, that we've... Yeah, and Tammy, Zilka. It's, it's just, it's, yeah, and Tammy is very detail-oriented, one, yeah. It's just an amazing committee. Yeah, yeah. So, thank you.
Okay, Airport Commission meets Wednesday. I had hoped for this committee that I would have had the final draft of the MOU, but I haven't gotten that yet from the mayor. A lot of things on his plate. He is coming to the Airport Commission, I think I mentioned that last time, to share his thoughts on the MOU and, on this Wednesday. He's early on in the, close to four o'clock, like 4:10 or something. So, anyway, so I don't have anything else to report. Next time I will. Yes, he has, unfortunately for him, yeah. Anything else? Okay. It's nine o'clock. Do you wanna, like, take a quick, little quick stretch? And then we will come back for the final couple issues. We don't have much to go. So, I'd like to call back into order the South Burlington City Council meeting of Monday, December 16th, 2019, and we will pick up at item 16, which is the council discussion and possible approval of a proposal from Earth Economics to conduct a cost-benefit analysis of certain properties within the city of South Burlington. So, Kevin?
So, the, um, I went back to Earth Economics with the refinement of the mission, and they came back to us with the proposal that I sent to you that was more tightly honed in on the twenty, I think I said to them, properties that have been identified by the Open Space Committee. What those properties are can be decided at some point, but the response is that, the one that they came back to you and I sent to you.
Oh, they haven't started with the twenty properties we have identified? That, that, they have the map, don't they?
They haven't started with it. You guys actually need to approve their proposal and the price tag for that.
You like it?
I guess.
You like it?
Yeah, I think it, I think it responds to the change, the kind of the change in focus well. They still are looking at a February completion date. It's half the, roughly half the price of the old one. So, if, if it meets your expectations and needs, John Stewart continues on with the more budget, specific budget-related portion of that study. But if you, if you wanna give me the, go ahead tonight. We'll get on the phone tomorrow and have them crank it up.
I'll move the week. Is that what you're gonna do?
No.
No.
I'm just gonna say, I'm still gonna vote against it. I voted against it last time. I just don't think it's worth twenty-seven thousand dollars. I don't think it's gonna tell us anything we don't already know, and I'd rather spend twenty-seven thousand dollars on more paving. But, again, I'm not gonna try to convince you guys. I, I just don't think this report is necessary to continue down the path we are going towards a sensible, smart growth and conservation, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Tom, I, I understand what you say, but I do think we'll learn something because we've got experts who will confirm what we might surmise, but we're not the experts, and I think it will give us some data for the future that can be valuable going forward. And, and for that price, with twenty parcels that have been clearly identified by a committee that's worked really hard to identify them, and asking us to do something with them and understand their value, I think this is probably something that's, that's a valid expenditure. I'm not jumping up and down about it, but I'm okay with it. That's, that's just my reasoning. And so, for that, I would move our approval. And as far as February is concerned, you know, everything we've talked about and everything we do takes longer because it's predominantly volunteers. People take vacations. People have, people, some people have jobs, you know, and, and, you know, and it's hard to schedule meetings, and then you have the holidays, and who knows what else, or a snowstorm, and, and so, reality is reality. So, let's just do the best we can. So, I, I think this is probably something we should do, and it'll be done when they say it'll be done. Fine.
Other comments?
We need a second.
Second, okay. Any other comments from the council? Thoughts? Michael?
Before you vote, I, I have some questions about the basic assumptions that Earth Economics has made in the first table that they presented. They say, business as usual, the cost of degraded ecosystems and the loss of ecosystem services, and the benefits would be revenue from property tax. We already know that open land returns, that the return on open lands are quite beneficial to a city, and we also know from the Vermont Natural Resources Council that expanding the grand list or the population shows that in, and they've done this over a number of years for twenty percent of towns in Vermont that have a top population of over, in several categories. But they've shown that the tax, that taxes go up. They don't go down when the grand list is expanded or the population expands. So, I, I don't think that's a valid assumption on their part that the benefits are gonna be revenue from property taxes. When you expand, the revenue doesn't cover the additional costs of infrastructure.
I, I gotta say something about that, Michael, because I've been quoted on that as it relates to the sustainability of the budget.
Yep.
And I, I was taken out of context on that. Had nothing to do with growth when I made that comment. I think, I think that, um...
I'm not referring to any...
You have to consider the sources of where that came from, as whether or not those sources are valid representations of the issue. I know the person who made those representations in Vermont over the last twenty years, and I don't think that it, it went without some bias going in. That's all I'm gonna say.
Yes, I wasn't referring to anything that you said.
Well, no, I, I used that opportunity to bring that up because I think I was taken out of context. That's not what I meant.
Yeah, it's a, it's a study that was done by the Vermont Natural Resource Council and Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And I believe that Alan Strong presented at least one, one part of it.
Yes, he, he did.
He did.
So, you know, that's, it's, it's a question in my mind, where are they starting from? That maybe that's not a good place to start from. And that the costs of, the costs of open space are lower revenue and because, and the benefits are preserved ecosystems, yes. But I don't think it's necessarily lower revenue. There are other state organizations that have, and it may, may also be the Vermont Natural Resources Council, that have shown a very good return on open land.
But I think figure two gets to that return, right? Where we have air quality, biological control, climate stability, disaster risk reduction, genetic...
The benefits of ecosystems are entitled to, yes.
Yes, so that's the return, right? So, they are gonna be quantifying that return in addition to looking at, you know, tax, income tax, or property taxes that we collect. And they're gonna be doing it for each parcel, right?
Should we vote on the table?
Yes.
Yes.
Because we could talk about this all night, and I have lots of opinions, but I don't wanna keep us here all night, so.
I, I think I've said what I wanted to say, and I think you should take note of my concern about those basic assumptions by Earth Economics.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, discussion? Okay, you ready for the vote? Okay, all in favor of having our city manager agree to a, this proposal from Earth Economics for twenty-six thousand and change, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Aye.
Okay, so Carrie's four to one. Thank you. And thank you, Kevin, for following up with, on this. Thank you.
So, the question, I guess, I have, because I'm not sure that it was understood before it came to me, is... Will they now be able to look at those twenty parcels, or do we need to approve the twenty parcels before they look at them?
I think if, if you can get from the Open Space Committee, the twenty that are gonna...
Send them to you.
Yeah, but would you go back and just confirm it? Because I have, I think I have two different things. Can you, let me put it this way. Can you send the list to me again?
Yes.
After this vote, and then I'll send that tomorrow. Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item seventeen, council discussion and possible approval of amendment to the Natural Resources Committee authorization that would adjust the number of members on the committee and the number of members to achieve a...
So, as you may have heard, the Natural Resources Committee is down several members, and we have been advertising for new members to join the committee, and we have not gotten any applicants yet. This has caused a problem for the Natural Resources Committee and their ability to conduct their business. I would like to propose to the council that you set in a motion the number of committee members for the Natural Resources Committee at anywhere between six and nine, and that a quorum shall represent one-half of the committee members plus one at any given time on that range.
Of active appointments.
Of active appointments. This will allow, I'm trying to...
So, move it.
Second.
Okay, discussion, or you wanna clarification?
If we say seven, then it's four and a half people, so they gotta consolidate.
Five.
No, four. If it's seven, it's four.
Yeah.
Take it, cut it now.
Right, and then one, right.
Okay, so, but, oh. If it's an odd number, it's okay, right?
Yes.
Do we have specific, do we need, do we have specific wording on that, or is it just what you're...
Pretty much what I just said.
Okay.
Because you are the city council, and you, and these are your committees. You can decide.
What was the current number they had? Nine?
It's nine. Well, that's what we...
Authorized for nine.
They're authorized for nine. So, this allows them to continue to be a viable committee if someone finds or we can only fill two of the spots, but they can still go forward as a functioning committee.
The optimal, the optimal is nine. And we'll continue to work to advertise for nine.
And we really encourage people to think about a Christmas gift, or, or, sorry, a holiday gift to someone as, encouraging them to apply.
A nomination.
A nomination, yeah, for the new year. I think you're trying to convince someone they know. David has his hand up, so he would like to say something?
I'm speaking as a former chair of the Natural Resource Committee. The Natural Resource Committee is going through a bit of a troubled time. I have resigned for personal reasons and all, but I think that we really do appreciate the commitment of the council that's trying to make to help us through this period, and thank you for that. So, still a very interested member of the committee, but not the chair.
Thank you. Okay, everyone ready for the vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Is there any other... Oh, I'm sorry, we can skip down to the first, no, the executive session? Twenty possible council action on extending the right of first refusal related to the conservation of property.
We have, this relates to the All Claire issue that Paul raised with you at the last meeting. We've reached an agreement with, with Wild Turkey Divide LLC, which was Dirt Capital, or is Dirt Capital, to extend the right of first refusal period till such time as we have an appraisal on the property and within four weeks after that. So, it's, they're Dirt Capital's company for this.
Do they change their name, or they have another name?
No, I think that's, I think that's what this project is called.
So, this project is called Wild Turkey?
So, this relieves any pressure that you have today on making a decision about exercising the option. And so, I think, I don't think you need to do anything.
Okay. Thank you. Good. All right. Possible executive session, Miss Williday?
Yes.
To receive confidential attorney-client communications relating to the append, pending appeal of the city of Burlington zoning permit 20-0514CA.
There is no other business, right?
No other.
Yeah, no other business.
Wait, but, Tim, I have other business.
I have some other business.
No other business at the executive session, is what they meant. All right. Okay, so before we go into executive session, there's some other business?
Just really briefly.
Okay.
Okay, so, one, Public Works needs to put the 25 mile an hour speed limit sign back up on northbound Spear Street at Quarry Hill entrance. The police department cannot issue tickets until they put that sign back up because they paved it, and it's been lacking since the...
I think about that every day when I stay at 35. It's great.
By hell, it's on the list.
I know, I know, and I, I know everybody's busy. There's, there's been some snow and stuff.
Don't they have one of those big things you just turn the drill on and go right down and stick the sign in?
And they hit a gas line.
Is there any other business?
And then, there, there are a couple potholes opening up. I just wanna point them out. There's one on Farrell Street next to Eastwood Common 1, I think it is. Is it, is it there? And there's another one that's on Spear down, like, it's on the uphill north side after you go on the interstate. Somewhere down there. It's, it's, you know, it's a delamination, but the problem is, once that water gets in there and freezes, it's just gonna start breaking up and get deeper, you know? We've got the honey wagon. Let's go out and take...
Third one on Kimble Ave, $1,300 damage, just broken shock, broken shock suspender.
Oh, oh, wait, wait. Oh, I thought you were making a...
Your car? Yeah.
I thought you were making a joke about the bridge being out. That's the biggest pothole.
Kimble, yeah.
Kimble, at where?
Where's that one?
I'll ask my husband exactly where.
It's been down there all the way the other day. I didn't notice.
Kimble? What was that? Which, which direction?
That erratic French driving? I don't think so. He's a pretty safe. He's a pretty good driver.
I've tried Kimble a lot, I, you know.
I'll ask him specifically. I'll send that to Kevin along with the maps.
Put a pin on it, right, and send it out.
After the weather that we've had the last couple of weeks, it's no surprise.
Any other business? Okay, no other business? Well, then I would entertain a motion to go into executive session briefly stated before the pending appeal. Second, all in favor?
Oh, invite Colin.
Oh, and I invite Colin McNeil.
Yeah, I had, I had specific...
Oh, I knew you when you were little. Yeah, I knew you. It's familiar. Or young, I should say.
Yeah, you're little now.
Well, you're taller. Okay, and, um, and you, are you?
Yes.
And Tom, oh, Tom doesn't, okay. And we will not be coming back into session for any, so, that we will adjourn following that executive session.